Okay, all right, so this is the study session for the upcoming midterm exam for poll 104 American government. And we're going to do two things in this study session. The first thing is, we're going to take a look at the questions for the exam. And where you locate those on the canvas site. Here comes another person. So hold on. I thought, how are you?
Good.
You? Good. I was just telling Bella that we're gonna go over, since you two are both in the other study session, we're going to go over the questions for this test first. And then I'll go over the expectations. I'm recording it for students who were unable to make it. And if you want to hop off when we're going over the expectations, you can, just because the expectations for this exam are the same as the expectations for the other exam. Okay, so that way you don't, if you don't want to sit through it twice, you don't. So we're going to start with going over the questions. All right, so let me share my screen. And we'll bring up the questions here. Okay, so you find the questions in the midterm exam. Midterm exam questions are here and they are available for everyone at this point. And then after we take a look at the midterm exam questions, then we'll take a look at the midterm exam expectations. But let's start with the questions. Okay, so you know, right here is where you see the the link to the questions. Okay, and so if you click here for the exam, you'll be able to see them. And if you click on the arrow, then you'll be able to download those. Okay, here comes somebody else. Hold on just for a second. Hi Brianna. Hi Brianna, can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Well, if you want to turn on your camera, you can. It's your choice. It's nice to see a face though, so it's up to you. And what we're doing is, we're going to go over the questions for the exam first. And then we're going to go over the expectations for the exam. And I also just wanted to let you know that we are recording this because other students who were unable to attend wanted to take a look at the recording, but it will only be posted to our private canvas site. So it's not going to be like posted to YouTube or anything like that. Okay, so I was, so I was, we were just talking about where you can find the midterm exam questions and they're available for you right now. They opened last night at midnight or this morning at midnight. And so you can click here and you can see the exam questions, or you can click here and then that will down, that will give you a download of the document for the midterm exam questions. So let me click on the midterm exam questions and they should come up here. And so we're gonna go over these questions and then we'll talk about what the expectations are. Now, before you take your exam and start working on your exam, I just want to, I'm going to stop the share for a second. I just want to remind you that this exam is an open book, open notes exam. It's not, it's not really timed like our midterm, like our multiple choice questions. You have the exam now and you have until Tuesday, October 26th at 11:59 PM to turn it in. So you have a lot of time to, you know, work on the exam, which will really set you up to be able to, you know, really do hopefully well on the exam. And so let's take a look at the questions. Here they are. Um, we'll take a look at the midterm exam expectations in a moment. And there's the due date, okay? And when you, when you open up this exam, the first thing that you should do is that you should, before answering the questions, make sure that you save the document. So Word document to your hard drive, your desktop or your zip drive. Students in the past have, you know, they have, you know, started working on the exam and then they don't save it and they lose all your work, all their work. So make sure that you save this before you start working on it. So we don't, so you don't lose any of your work. And then there are six questions for this exam. We'll go over each of these separately. And you choose the four that you would like to answer. And I'm adding Chloe, Chloe, welcome. Here's come Sienna. Okay. Welcome Chloe, welcome Sienna. I'm recording this and so just to let you know, it will be posted for those who are unable to attend, but it won't be publicly available. It will just be on our canvas site. I just have to let you know that I'm recording it. And right now we are going over the questions for the exam, which are available now for you. Okay? And so we're just, you know, talking about that when you open the exam, make sure that you save it to your hard drives before you start working on it. This is an open book, open note test and you have until next Tuesday at 11, or this coming Tuesday at 11:59 PM to turn it in. And so we're going to go over each of these questions here. There's six questions and you are responsible for answering four of these questions. Okay? And after we look at the questions, then we're going to take a look at the general expectations for the exam. Okay? Okay, so um, when you, when you download this exam and you save it to your hard drive or whatever you're going to save it to, just go ahead and answer the questions right in the body of the document. Okay? And so as it says here, make sure to include the question at, for each of the questions at the start of each answer. And if you're, for the questions you're not answering, just go ahead and skip that question, or you can delete it from the document. Okay? It's important that you include the answer, or I'm sorry, the question in your answer. So that you can make sure that you're answering all of the prompts in the question. Okay? But don't answer the question within the question, just start like here. You know, after the question is there, just start entering your answer at that point. Okay, so the first question has to do with the concept of democracy, which we, you know, you know, spent some time talking about this semester so far. The first question is, is just because a country calls itself a democracy, it doesn't make it a democracy. And we know that, you know, we talked about that in one of the lectures. North Korea, for example, calls itself a democracy, but it is not a democracy because it doesn't live up and embody the principles of the democracy. So just because a country calls itself a democracy, it doesn't make it a democracy. For a country to be truly democratic, it needs to embody certain principles and values that are necessary to building and maintaining a democratic society. So drawing upon course materials, that can include lectures, the textbook, but also I'm expecting you to pull upon the song essay. You know, what it means to be an American. In this, in this question, I want you to identify and three, identify and describe three principles that you think are most important to the, to the maintenance of democracy. Making sure to explain why you think these three principles are the most important. Okay, so you identify them. And then you, you explain those principles and then you also talk about why you think those three principles are most important for maintaining a democratic society. Next, evaluate how well you think the United States is doing, the United States is doing in terms of realizing these principles. In what ways is the United States living up to the principles of these three principles of democracy? Where does the United States fall short? Make sure you're about, make sure to support your evaluation of the United States with evidence from course materials. Okay? And so that is the first question and I'm going to stop sharing the screen just for a second, so I can see you guys a little bit better. Okay? And so, you know, with that question, you know, there, there are more than three principles that are necessary for a democracy. We talked in class and in lecture about, one is that you need to have an informed and active citizenry. We also talked about the importance of efficacy, the people that feel like their, their voices being heard. We've, we, in the Sarah Song article, she talks about civic solidarity. But there's also, you know, the principles of that people have to have their personal liberties protected. People have to have a right to be able to voice their opinions through voting, etc. So there are many principles that you can choose from of the three that you want to include. And so as long as you are including one of the three, or three of those big group of principles necessary for democracy, then that's fine. And you know, when you talk about the question, and here I'll go back and share this, the screen here. When you're, you know, answering this question about in what way is the United States living up to these principles? There's really no right or wrong answer to that question. That you, you can use your best judgment to make the case for that the United States is or is not living up to those principles. But you are going to want to use evidence from our course materials to support your claims that you're making about, hey, they're not living up to political efficacy and here's why. Or people in the United States need to have, democracies need to have knowledgeable citizens, but our citizens aren't that knowledgeable. Here's why. Okay? So that's the first question. Do you guys have any questions about that question? Any clarifications you'd like me to make on that question? All right, hearing none, let's move to the next question. Okay, so the next question is about the framers of the constitution. And it says the framers of the constitution were very aware of the problems associated with the democratic form of government. Remember, this was a new form of government. There were little to no governments that actually were democratic. Most of them were autocracies run by a king or a queen. And they knew that it was sort of a dangerous form of government because it was sort of, you know, it didn't, it didn't last for a long time. When people did try to try democracy, you know, it didn't, didn't last. And so they were really aware of the problems associated with the democratic form of government. The framers knew that for a democracy to not just survive but thrive, they needed to create a constitution that places a check on the threats to democracy. Okay, and there's a whole lecture dedicated to this and then your textbook as well. So in this question, I first want you to explain how tyranny of the majority and the abuse of power pose a threat to the democratic form of government. Making sure to define and provide examples of these concepts in your answer. Next, I want you to explain how two of the following reduce the harmful effects of the above listed threats. Separation of power, checks and balances and federalism. Choose two of those. You don't need to do all three, but you do need to choose either separation of power, federalism, or checks and balances and separation of power. Choose two. Make sure to define these concepts and provide concrete examples of how these concepts reduce the threat to, the threats to democracy. Okay? So in that question, you know, we had a whole lecture on the architecture of democracy and how whole idea was that, you know, if we had, if our, if our government was run by angels, we wouldn't have to put like any checks on, on people because they were angelic. But they're not run by angels. They're run by self-interested people who are able to abuse power and where the majority will trample upon the rights of the minorities. And so make sure that you take a look at that lecture as well as the textbook and answering that question. Do you have any questions about that question? Okay, let's move on to question three. This is a fun question. They're all fun. So this one has to do with civil liberties. And so the question is, of the personal liberties guaranteed by the Bill of Rights, which three liberties do you think are essential to maintaining a democratic society? In other words, if you could select only three liberties which the government is prohibited from approaching upon, which would you choose and why? And on the flip side, which two liberties excluding quartering of soldiers in the third amendment? Because whenever I give this question, people are like, oh, you don't really need that amendment because it's not used anymore. So you can't choose that. But on the flip side, which two liberties do you think are not as essential to maintaining a democratic society? In other words, what two liberties could be eliminated from the Bill of Rights with little to no impact on democracy? Make sure to provide a brief explanation of each of the liberties in your answer as well as provide a well-developed reason for your choices. And note, you must select a liberty, not a whole amendment. So amendments contain multiple liberties. For example, the first amendment contains five liberties. Speech, freedom of the press, freedom of religion, etc. You need to select a specific liberty. Don't, you can't say, I choose the first amendment, the fourth amendment, and you know, the eighth amendment or something like that. You can't do that. You gotta pick a specific liberties. Okay? There are no right or wrong answers to this question, right? What, I mean, it's, you could choose what our liberty, well, it would be wrong if you chose a liberty that's not in the Bill of Rights. Okay, then that would be wrong. Like if you said the right to healthcare, maybe, well, that's not a liberty that's in the Bill of Rights. Okay? So you could be wrong because you select the wrong liberty. However, short of that, you just make a case for which liberties you think are most essential. And make sure that you make the connection between the liberties and why those liberties are necessary for democracy. Okay? So the best answers will make that connection. Do you guys have any questions about that? Just as a reminder, you cannot pick quartering. You can't, you could pick quartering that you think that's essential for having the right to quarter troops in our homes is essential for democratic society. You could make that argument. I think it would be hard to make, but you could make it. But you can't say that it's not one of the essence, that, that it's one we could get rid of because that's kind of easy since it's not a liberty that's really been utilized. All right, let's look at question four. This one's pretty straightforward. The reason I included this in the exam is because in our lectures, we sort of talked about the broad concept of civil rights. But I wanted to make sure that students could demonstrate their understanding of the two pieces of civil rights legislation that are really essential to guaranteeing civil rights in the United States. And so this question says that many advances in civil rights have been accomplished through federal legislation. Describe the different parts of the Civil Rights Act of 1965 and the Voting Rights Act of 1960, or I'm sorry, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. What have these two laws accomplished? How might, and then the critical thinking question here, and don't, you make sure you answer that. How might federal civil rights laws be expanded or changed in order to address inequalities that continue to persist today? And explain your answer. Okay? So you're basically saying, these are two key pieces of civil rights legislation. Where do they fall short? And you know, how, how might they be expanded? Or what other kinds of civil rights legislation might we need to put in place? To make sure that civil rights is guaranteed in the United States. Okay? So I will say that you, the best answers will not just enumerate every single part of the legislation. You need to summarize it. Okay? And so it's your responsibility to say, in the Civil Rights Act of 1964, there's a lot in it. You know, summarize and identify what you think are the most important parts of that law. And same with the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Don't just regurgitate what's in the textbook. Summarize it, make it concise, but still demonstrate that you understand those. Okay? And then, you know, build off of that in terms of how we can, need to continue to improve civil rights in the United States. Any questions about that? All right, let's move on to five. Um, there's, I offered you two questions about the Congress. One is, we talked about it in lecture, but, and you did have a short video to watch about how a bill becomes a law. And also the cartoon from the Schoolhouse Rock. But I know a lot of students like to learn about how a bill becomes a law, but I didn't dedicate a whole lecture to that. But there's a lot of information about that in the textbook. So I wanted to make sure to include a question about how a bill becomes a law, about the legislative process in the exam to give students the opportunity to like demonstrate their knowledge about it. But some students are like not as interested in learning about the details of it. So if you don't want to answer that question, you don't have to answer it. So number five is that about the difference between sociological representation and agency representation. So as it says there, there are many different ways that members of Congress can represent the American people. Define and discuss the difference between sociological representation and agency representation. Making sure to provide concrete examples of each theory in your answer. Of these two theories, which do you think comes closest to describing the current way the US Congress represents the American people? So if you look at Congress today, do you think that the, that the way that Congress is reflects the Americans and represents American people? Do you think that agency representation does a better job of explaining how Congress represents the people of the United States? Or do you think sociological representation does a better job? And explain your answer. And then of the two, which theory do you think comes closest to how the US Congress should represent the American people? Okay? Should, it is what's better for representation in the United States, sociological representation or agency representation? Okay? Again, there, there is, for that second part of that question, the should, which of these two theories should be, should be used to best represent the people? There's no right or wrong answer to that, agency or sociological. For the first one saying, which of those two theories does the best job explaining how Americans are currently represented? I think there's a right answer, but a case could be made for either agency or sociological. Okay? I think the evidence suggests supports that Americans are represented in more in one way than the other. But again, if you can make a case for either of those, go for it. There's, I am open to being persuaded. Okay, before we move on to the other, the final question about Congress, do you have any questions about the sociological versus agency representation question? Any questions? Okay, and then the final question has to do with, very straightforward. Describe the process by which a bill becomes a law. What are the major steps in the process? What are the main differences in the legislative process between the two houses of Congress, the House of Representatives and the Senate? What role do party leadership and the president play in the process? And what do you think are the biggest hurdles a bill faces in the legislative process? And then finally, don't, and don't throw this critical thinking piece away. If you were to make changes to this process, what would those changes be and why? And explain. And if you think that the process is working just fine, if you feel no changes are necessary, explain why. So you could say, hey, I don't think there really does need to be changes. And here's why. But make sure you explain regardless of which position you take. So again, sort of similar to the question about the Civil Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act, you do not need to enumerate all of the steps in the legislative process because there are a lot. Again, summarize it. Give me the big picture, but make sure that when you're giving me that big picture, that you're demonstrating your understanding of the legislative process. Okay? All right, let me stop the share of my screen. And then I'm going to just go by people. Bella, Bill, you got any questions about those questions?
I'm good.
Brianna, you, do you have any questions about the questions?
No, I don't. I understand them pretty well.
Cool. Thought, do you have any questions about the questions?
No questions.
Chloe? Sienna, you have any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, I remember I could do, which one? The, what you're looking for for that sociological representation and the agency representation? I'm, I'm not 100% sure what that exactly means.
Okay, um, so there is a lecture, well, both the textbook talks about the difference between sociological and agency representation. But there's also a lecture about it, so I'd encourage you to like review that lecture. But I can, I can, you know, summarize those differences. So the sociological theory of representation, it, when we were talking about these two theories in the lecture, it was sort of like, because we have a representative form of government, like the people in the United States don't directly make decisions about public policy and law. We elect people to make those decisions for us. And for a representative government to work, we need to trust that our representatives are representing what we want. Like we have to trust that they're acting in our interest. Okay, so that, and so those two theories are saying, there's different ways of building that trust. One way you can build that trust is you can say, you know what? If Congress looks like the American public, like if the American public is half men and half women, and if the American public is like 60% white folks and 40% minority folks, right? That, that if, if America is like one-third Republicans, one-third independents, one-third Democrats, etc., right? If America is like a bunch of middle-class wage earners, right? Like we have confidence that our lawmakers represent us because they look like us. Their lived experiences are like our lived experiences, you know? But if you're looking at Congress and they're like all rich and they're all white and they're all male, and you know, they're all, you know, whatever, like no independent parties are represented, you might look at that and go, dang. I don't feel like they, like, I don't trust that they're going to like represent us. Um, so that's sociological representation. Sienna, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I remember you talking about it now. I just must not realize that.
No, totally cool. And that's the whole process of learning, right? You like learn it and then you're like, then you have to do the exam. You have to kind of like relearn it. I'm going to put you on the spot here, Sienna. Do you remember what agency representation is? And Sienna, if you don't know, maybe somebody else in the class can help out. Do you remember what agency is?
My hand, but if you start talking about it, I might remember.
Totally cool.
My friend used to be talking about Congress having, you know, white men and not enough women. And I was like, oh yeah, there's all those charts and.
Does anyone want to take a stab at it about what is, like, how is, how do we build trust from the agency theory of representation? Anyone remember that? Sienna, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Is that like, like by party, like Democratic, Republican, independent? Like that or no?
It's, remember in lecture, we talked about that it's like a client, um, it's like a client agent relationship, relationship. And so it's like, if I'm a client and I hire somebody to represent me, like I expect them to like live up to the contract. Like I elected you and now you better do what I want you to do, right? It's sort of like, if I'm, if I'm charged with a crime and I hire a defense attorney to defend me, that's like an agent, I'm the client and I hired a defense attorney as my agent to represent me. And if they don't represent me, like I'm going to fire that agent, right? And be like, you're doing a crappy job. I'm going to jail, you know? And so the agency theory of representation is that, like, we treat our representatives like our agents. And if they are like doing what we want them to do, if our concerns are, we want you to address climate change or we want you to, you know, keep guns, you know, like free and easy, have access to guns. Or like, we want to have, you know, you know, sort of like paid leave. If they're doing that, we're going to keep hiring them, right? We're going to keep re-electing them. But if they fail to do that, doesn't matter if they're white, black, doesn't matter if they're rich or if they're doing their job, we're going to vote for them. If they're not doing their job, we're not going to, we're going to like basically fire that person. In other words, not reelect them the next time they're up for reelection. And so that's sort of the big difference between that sociological theory. And that we build trust with an agency is that we build trust because they, that our, our agents are actually like representing what we want. And if they're not, we're going to get rid of them. And, and we're just not going to elect them for the next go around. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, because I remember that I'm talking about the lawyer, like the example you just said, the lawyer in the book, it said lawyer and if you hired them and whatever.
Right, yeah. You know, one of the critical thinking pieces of that is that, once you're in Congress, you hardly ever lose your job. I think we talked about that in lecture, like.
That's what I was just going to bring up. I know in the book it said that they're like voted, they're like revoted in constantly, like most of them. Or whatever, that just do the people not, I don't know, like not really thinking about the voter. I mean, what, I don't really, why do they?
Right, there's a lot of reasons for that high reelection rate. I mean, one is that a lot of people don't pay attention. And then what, they go to vote for the representative, they just recognize a name. And if that person's been in office for a long time, they're like, oh yeah, I've heard of Gwen Moore. I'm going to vote for her, but they're not really paying attention. Also, a lot of times people really like their own representative, but they hate Congress. They're like, the other Congress people suck. Well, my representative, I met him at a Fourth of July parade and that, they seem really nice, you know? And so there's a, there's a lot of reasons for that, that they touch upon in the textbook. And we're actually going to talk about later in the semester when we talk about like why people get reelected for office. But yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty complicated. But yeah, they, Hey Chloe, do you have any questions? But I think I already asked Chloe and Sienna. How about Drew? Did I, Drew, do you have any questions about the questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, cool. All right, let's shift gears now and I'll go back to sharing the screen. And let's take a look at the expectations for the exam. Okay, so those are the questions. Let it, let's go ahead and take a look at what, what I'm expecting. For like, like. For like, like, if you want to get an A, uh, here are the things that you should do. And so, um, let's go back to home here. Scroll down. Okay, so the midterm exam information. So make sure you review this. Okay. So you guys know this covers topics one through six, okay? That you should have access to the questions if you don't let me know. Exam length, so the, the length of the exam should be about eight pages. Okay, double spaced pages. And I'm gonna look, I'm trying to use my annotating thing. And so, so about two pages per answer. Okay? As it says there, if it's a little shorter, that's okay. If it is a little longer, that's okay. But if it's a lot shorter than eight pages, then that's, that's not going to be good. Okay? That's gonna be, that's gonna be more, that's gonna be problematic. If it's a lot longer than eight pages, like twelve pages, you're gonna wanna go in and you're gonna want to edit. Okay? So that's the general expectation in terms of length. To do a good job, answer these questions, you should, you know, a, a good, well-developed answer should be about two double-spaced pages. Okay? You do want to submit your exam as one complete document. Don't submit as separate documents for each answer. You should just download the document and then, and then just answer the questions within that document and submit it as one document. So the best exams will answer each prompt in the essay question in a way that demonstrates an excellent understanding of the course concepts for the specific topic. And so with that, there are lots of prompts. And you know, you'll notice our, for our discussion posts, like people will lose points if they don't answer all the prompts. Take that same approach to our essay, to take that same approach to the exam. Make sure that you answer all of the prompts. And as I was telling Thought and Bella there in my other class, when there's a critical thinking prompt, like, like which of the principles of democracy is, do you think is most important or whatever the, the critical thinking prompt is? Don't throw it away, right? Really, you know, answer the question. It's based on your opinion. But you're gonna wanna, you're gonna wanna support that opinion with evidence from the coursework. So when it comes to the prompts, don't throw away the, the critical thinking prompt. Make sure you take it seriously. That's what usually differentiates A exams from the other exams. You'll want to use the course material to support your answer to the questions. And the course material includes the lectures, and you can use the commentary, the textbook, and any other, other course readings. Any of the articles that you've read for the, the discussions. Now, keep in mind that you do not need to use all of these resources for each of the questions. Just what you find helpful and supporting answers, the answers. So to put that another way, for each answer, you don't have to bring something in from the lecture and the textbook and one of the articles. Okay? For one answer, you could use evidence from the, from the lecture and the textbook. For the other answer, you could say, you know, one of the articles we read in the textbook. Okay? But when you look at the exam in the whole, you should be pulling upon all of the course material. Okay? And including the course commentary. There's no need to use external research for this, right? I mean, so all the answers that, all the support you need is in the course material. So you do not need to look stuff up, get additional articles or anything like that. I also wanted to say that when it comes to the course material, if you're using anything directly, like a verbatim quote from the textbook or from an article, you know, or from the lecture as well, if it's a verbatim quote, you're gonna wanna put those in quotations and provide the page number or the lecture. Because if you don't do that, it's plagiarism. Okay, so if you, you can use direct quotes. They shouldn't be that long. Okay, they should be pretty precise to, to support the point that you're making. But if it is a direct quote, use, you know, make sure you put those in quotation marks. Okay? And then the exam should be written in a clear and easy-to-follow manner with few grammatical errors. So make sure you proofread. A couple of errors are okay, but if it's really like, looks like it's sloppy and that you didn't proofread, that's gonna be a problem. And then do provide in-text citations for the material used. So example, We the People, page one twenty-three, or Topic Five, Lecture One. Okay? Or you can, you know, simply say the author's name for the article that you read, like song, you know, like for Sarah Song, comma, and then the page number from that, that article. If there's an article, a page number, which there should be. Okay? You don't need a works cited page or anything like that. Okay? And so those are the expectations for the exam. I'm gonna stop sharing. Do you have any questions about those expectations? And I know that Bella and Thought, you, we went over those expectations in the last study session. Breonna, do you have any questions about the expectations, like what I'm looking for, for like what makes an A exam?
No, do not. They're pretty clear and understandable.
Cool. Chloe, do you have any questions?
No, I understand it.
Sienna, how about you?
Not really, no.
Okay, and Drew?
No, I don't got any questions.
Okay. And then, and, and in the end, are there any concepts you want to go over or anything like that, that you'd like clarification? From the course? Anything you, you know, any, anything you, any material that you're sort of struggling with that you want to talk about? Or I just like to have a little bit of open space for that at the end, towards the end of the study session. Anything? Okay, well, as you're preparing for the exam, you have time to work on it. Don't hesitate to reach out and if you need a clarification on the question, or if you're saying, you know, like, you know, this is what I have for the difference between sociological representation and agency representation. Am I moving in the right direction? I can help you with that. I can't like, if you asked me, like, what is the definition of democracy or something like that? I'm not gonna do that, right? Like, I mean, the specific answers you need to kind of find on your own, but I can give you feedback on the work you're doing if that is helpful. So don't, I'm around all weekend, so don't, and at the beginning of next week, obviously, so don't hesitate to email, text, or give me a call or, or however you want to get in touch. Okay? All right, well, thanks a lot for attending. I appreciate it. And good luck on your exam. I'm sure you guys are all gonna do great. All right, talk to you later. Bye.